Kyeonghee. Hands forwards. It's a busy one today. Backwards. Hands on your shoulders, forwards. Backwards. Arms forwards. Backwards. One forwards, one backwards. Change. Hands on your hips, circle your hips round. It's hotter than I thought. Change. Okay, feet together, hands on your knees, circle your knees round. Change. Change again. Lifting your knees. Hi, Emil. Inwards. Hi, Adonis. Okay, I forgot where I put the pads. Okay, grab two pads. Okay, just gonna start off with punches again. So it's four punches, duck, four punches, duck. Ready, nice and easy to start with. Ready, let's go. 10 seconds left. Okay, stop there. Well done. Swap the pads over. Ready, round two. Four punches and duck. Let's go. Punch harder. Sorry. Didn't say that. The duck. Proper ducks. Back straight, yeah. In the knees. That's it. 10 seconds. This is the first one. Okay, stop there. Very good, well done. Okay, now we're doing four kicks and four punches. So we do double on one side, so we do one, two. Double on the other. And then four punches. Two, three, four, and then we go back to the double, double, and then four. Okay, is everybody ready? Ready? Let's go. Two, two, four. Two. 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 Four. Halfway. All right. Okay, stop there. That's good, good work, well done. Swap the pads over. Ready, round two. Same again. Emil, you ready? Oh, drink. Ready, let's go. Two. Two. Four. I'm not asking. Try not to kill me. Awesome. Halfway. Okay, stop there. Well done guys, well done. Now, we're gonna stay on the punches just for one more, one more set of punches. Okay, so every time you put the pads up, two punches. Okay, so you do two, and then two, and two. You can move backwards or forwards. They've got to follow you with their hands by their chin. As soon as they see the pads, two punches each time. If you're on your knees and you can't move, then obviously just alter the timing in between. So you can wait, 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 put them up, put them up again, and then wait, put them up, wait, wait, put them up. You get the idea. All right, are you ready? 50 seconds. Ready, mom? Let's go. Faster. Two punches. There you go. Halfway. You still try? I'm gonna have to move in. Okay, stop there. That was good, well. Very good, well done, swap over, swap the pads over. Well, nobody's actually swapping pads over, so I'll just say round two. Okay, ready, round two. Just two punches. Ready, let's go. Fast as you can. Be distance try. Faster. Faster, harder. Okay, stop there. Well done guys, well done, very good. Now, this time you're gonna put the pads out for turning kick. So you can do one of four options. You can put it on this side, middle, or this side high. Okay? You can put it the other side middle, or the other side high. Okay, so it's up to you which one of the four you put out. Okay, so they could have one leg in front, which means they're kicking off the back leg. Or they may have to kick off the front leg, depending on which hand you put out. Okay? So I just want you to choose, switch and change. Okay? As you see fit. Are you ready? 50 seconds, four choices. Let's go. Hit faster. Hey, stop there. Hey, Nate and Abby's back, hi. All right, okay, ready, round two. Let's go. 15 to go. Okay, stop there. Yeah, I can't read it, Nate. We've not seen what we are doing.
I've got no idea what we're doing.
We've... You've got no idea what you're doing? Yeah, me too, I have no idea either. Okay. We did an exercise. Right, okay, that's good. That's good. Okay, so next one now. So we're doing a side kick. So tigers, you're just going to do side kick. Now, with the pads, I just want the pad people to put the pad... This is for tigers. Put the pad either one side or the other. Okay? And the tigers, you're gonna stay side... You're gonna side kick one side or turn and side kick with the other leg. Okay? Keep turning, keep using a different leg each time. You can put it one side or the other. Okay? Everybody else, you're doing side kick, followed by reverse side kick. Okay, so side kick, reverse side kick. So it should be like this. So front leg, back leg. Okay? All right, ready? So you only need, for the side kick reverse side, you only need one pad. You just, ideally, you just need to step back for the second kick. So leave yourself some room to step back for the second kick. Ready? Ready, mom? Let's go. Side kick, reverse. Good. Other leg. Too far. 10 seconds left. Yo, stop there. Swap the pads over. If you're doing that. Ready, round two. You're all right, Ella, you're practicing your slaps. Yeah, good, good. You need that, yeah. Ready, round two. Let's go. Hit the target. Use the force, Luke. There you are. May has turned off her targeting computer. She's using force. That's the way you're blaming me. Okay, stop there. I got kicked more than the pads did that time. Okay, swap the pads over if you haven't already. Okay. Now, we're doing three turning kicks, stepping forward. So you start from a distance back. So we're gonna kick one, kick two, kick three. Now, it's up to you what heights you put them, but you need to be holding it one side, the other side, and then the first side again. So take a step back with each kick. Now, if you can't step back because you're on your knees, just do one, two, three. Okay? Or if you haven't got room. Ready. Oh, Tim, you taking over. Who just arrived. It's to save the day. Ready. 50 seconds, ready, mom? Let's go. Making this look easy, mom. Oh, sorry. Okay, stop there, time's up. Swap the pads over. Or round two, I should say. Ready, round two. Ready, sir? Ready, mom? Let's go. Sorry, my fault. Go right in the corner. Just give me a bit more space. Okay, stop there. Well done. Grab a drink if you need a drink. Okay, now tigers, you're doing something different to the taekwondo. So tigers, you're gonna do a kick middle of the front legs. So front legs, so you're gonna go kick middle, kick high. So you put your foot down in between, so you're kicking one, kick two. Now, with taekwondo students, you're gonna do same thing. You can do kick middle, kick high, hook. Same legs, so the pad needs to change direction for the last kick. So you go one, two, three. Okay? Kick middle, kick high, hook, and then change legs. Okay? All right, has everybody got that? So tigers, you're only doing the two kicks, one, two, and then change legs, one, two. You can either kick off the front leg or the back leg, it's up to you. Ready? Ready, mom? Let's go. Hey, stop there. Swap the pads over. Ready, round two, round two. Ready? Let's go. She's too close. Might shouldn't hit too high. Fair enough. Ten left. Hey, stop there. Swap the pads over. Well done guys, well done. Now, we're doing double side kick, double side kick. So pad holders, you're just holding the pad out to one side, and then the other side. Okay? So one side and then the other side. So the kicking person off the front leg, you're gonna change the front leg each time. So you go double side kick, one, two, then out to the other side, double side kick, one, two. And keep changing legs, keep changing sides. So all we have to do is hold it out flat like this. Imagine it's like your body, but just to the side. So the target is to the side of your body. Okay, ready? Emil, you ready? Double side kick. Ready? Let's go. Okay, stop there. Swap the pads over. Ready, round two, double side kick, double side kick. Ready? Let's go. Change legs each time.
You don't have to change sides, I can just change the... Yeah.
You know, that's all everyone, it's the same size. Well, I've got to do it.
I don't want to clap it in.
Change into that corner. Hey, kicking left it in again. Ten left. No power. Okay, stop there. Okay, swap the pads over. We've got one more, quick one to do, one more. Okay. So we're gonna jumping turning kick, jumping turning kick. The tigers, sorry, you're doing a jumping side kick. So all you do is put the pad shoulder height. They've got a jump and kick with the side or the edge of the foot. Okay, jumping side kick. Okay? But taekwondo, you're doing jumping turning kick. So let's just do the jumping side kick here. So you just jump and kick, and then with the other leg, jump and kick. So kick with the side of the foot. Now, jumping turning kick, you hold the pad sideways on. So the edges are pointed at the student or the person kicking. Okay? So here, look, with the back leg, you've got a jump and turning kick. Then it's the other side, jump, turning kick. Okay, is everybody ready? Good luck. Okay, try not to get any complaints from the neighbours when they hear all the banging going on. Okay, are you ready? Let's go. Try not to kill me. 20 seconds to go. Okay, stop there. Very good, well done. Last one now, last one. Jumping turning kick or jumping side kick, very last exercise. Let's go. Get some distance between you and the planet. Fifteen left. Five. Hey, stop there, stop there, well done, well done. Good effort everybody, well done, very good. Okay, pad holders, thank you very much. Students, face the hot pad holders please, cheer it. Kyeonghee. Thank you guys. Okay, legs out wide. Legs out as wide as you can, no, you go, I'm not sure. Bit wider. That's good stretching, Fraser and Harvey, well done. Ella, I assume it's good stretching, can't see you. That's good, Emil, very good. Nate, Abby's stretching out. Isaac, lower, lower, lower. Okay, gently lower yourself to the ground. Bring your feet in, push your knees out to the side. Shake your knees up and down. Well done guys, good effort today. Thanks for logging on. Okay, stand up. Okay guys, have a great weekend, I hope you have a lovely weekend. And I'll hopefully see you on Monday, see you on Monday. Cheer it! Kyungye! Well done, thank you, thank you, bye!